All the incentives and new impact. And then work from the floor.
This one Washington.
Yes, Washington Square. And we had noticed the buildings are down and everything's been leveled and.
The phase one of three is complete.
Yeah.
Then working on. Uh, I've got a few other projects in the area, so trying to, you know, wrap because they're all. I'm actually gonna pull the trigger on, uh, doesn't make much sense here for this meeting, but. I'm gonna pull permits out of two existing, uh, single family lots. That are, they're funding on Notre, Notre Dame and Harlem Street. So, you know, which helps me a lot, you know, every reason, oh, this purpose, but I've also given two single, that's almost as far as private well. Use those lots, we, you know, the team's single family. So rather than both for a resumé and all that, we actually modified the building to, you know, we had sixty units originally in the post. We had to pull back from the house to allow those persons to set it. And, uh, yeah, so we're gonna go to the same.
Okay, but for the record, independent of what we're doing here today. Alright, I know it's time, right?
Good, alright, I'd like to call to order the public hearing for Patent Property Management LLC, Washington Square, the project. Alex, if you can do some, anybody online?
Uh, nobody is present online.
Oh, Chris Patton or Al, okay, I'll let the two gentlemen down at the end say their names. Bob Miller, D I L O, my seller.
Great, alright, uh, if everybody just give Alex some time, we'll read the notice for the meeting.
A notice is hereby given that a public hearing pursuant to Article eighteen dash one A of the New York State General Municipal Law. Will be held by the Counties of Warren and Washington Industrial Development Agency. On the fifteenth day of September at twelve o'clock P M local time. At the Office of Fitzgerald Morris Baker Firth, P C, sixty-eight Warren Street. Glens Falls, New York, one two eight zero one. The public hearing may also be livestreamed on YouTube under Warren Washington I D A. Or available via Zoom at the following information. Patent Property Management LLC, a li- limited liability company. Established pursuant to the laws of the state of New York, having an address of twenty. Ridwood Court, Queensberry, New York, one two eight zero four. Has requested that the agency provide financial assistance in the form of real property tax abatement. A mortgage recording tax abatement and a sales tax abatement regarding a certain housing project. To consist of the acquisition by the agency of a leasehold interest in certain real property. Located at three ninety-one Glen Street, three ninety-nine Glen Street, ten Harlem Street. And twelve Harlem Street, in the city of Glens Falls, County of Warren, New York. And being known as tax map parcel numbers, three zero two point two zero dash sixteen dash fourteen. Three zero two dot twenty dash sixteen dash thirteen. Three zero two dot twenty dash sixteen dash one. Three zero two dot twenty dash sixteen dash two, respectively. And a portion of three zero two dot twenty dash sixteen dash fifteen. Consis- consisting of approximately two point zero plus or minus acres. To be commonly referred to as Washington Square, the planning, design, construction, operation. And maintenance by the company of approximately two three-story buildings totaling twenty-eight thousand. Seven hundred and fifty-four plus or minor minus square footage, three-story. Housing facility consisting of fifty-four one-bedroom apartments. The acquisition of and installation in and around the land and improvements. By the company of machinery, equipment, fixtures and other items of tangible personal property. And entering into a straight lease transaction pursuant to the agency will retain a leasehold interest in the facility. For a period of time and sublease such interest in the facility back to the company all pursuant to Title One. Of Article eighteen dash A of the mu- general municipal law of the state of New York, chapter eight sixty-two. Of the laws of nineteen seventy-one and the state of New York as amended. The agency will be providing financial assistance with respect to the project in the form of sales tax exemptions. Related to the construction and equipping of the project facility, a mortgage recording tax exemption on qualifying mortgages. And a payment in lieu of taxes which are consistent with the policies of the agency, including the agency's policy on deviations. Should other financial assistance be requested, it shall be consistent with the policies of the agency. A representative of the agency will be in attendance at the above stated time and place. To hear and accept written comments from all persons with views in favor of. Or opposed to the granting of financial assistance contemplated by the agency. Or the location or nature of the facility. The application of the company is available for public inspection during normal business hours at the offices of the agency. Located at five Warren Street, Glens Falls, New York, one two eight zero one. Minutes of the hearing will be made available to all necessary parties.
Great, we'll turn over to Chuck.
Okay, Mr. Patton, if you don't mind, describe the project. After Washington Square is a three-phase project. It consists of sixty-four brand-new one-bedroom apartments, uh, with the man who's downtown apartments. So, this is gonna be rated, very mild with revitalization downtown. Uh, amongst our business, so, uh, again, fifty-four this year, phase one has already been completed. It's a demolition of three existing buildings that were, you know, ready to come down, so. Uh, those three, those three buildings have been tore down, phase two will be the completion of the twenty-four unit. Uh, building that's gonna be known as, we've consolidated those tax maps, explaining how we only have. Uh, the address for us, three ninety-nine Glen Street. Uh, and then in phase three will be the, this thirty-minute building, which we have at Harlem Street as well, so. Fifty-four one-measure units, uh, all brand new construction, obviously, granite counters, stainless steel appliances. High-end units, uh, all, all whole buildings will have three-story elevators. A B A compatible units on every, every single apartment in the buildings. Uh, will, you know, consolidate the parking lot that's currently being used for, uh, the attorney's office there, but upon it. And that will become a shared lot, describing our location there, um, yeah, it's gonna work out perfectly. The attorneys will leave and the tenants will come back, but a shared lot there, so. Um, it'll take care of drainage on site, we'll have permeable asphalt there, so that we add it to the stormwater. You know, issues in the city. And then, uh, water connections, sewer connections, and, yeah, it's gonna be great projects.
And the total project cost is rounding ten point two million dollars. Uh, land rounding is one point five million, building construction, infrastructure rounding is six point six million. And fixtures and equipment is another one point seven million. And the professional and other fees are about four hundred thousand dollars for a total of ten point two, correct?
It's saving the other projects, and this has been over a year and a half, the baking and stuff, you know, just see cost a lot more things and. And where the finance is lined up, discussed, we'll convert those to more mortgage to the, uh, trust.
Okay, great, well with that, let me describe the three proposed investment incentives. First, there's property tax incentives afforded pilots. The project qualifies for pilot within the I D A's uniform tax sound policy. The pilot payments will be for a term of ten years with a fifty percent exemption of real property taxes on the value of improvements for year one. And five percent annual increase for years two through ten after construction is completed. The pilot may occur in two phases. This will total an estimated one million, two hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred forty dollars in payments over ten years. Versus an estimated one million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars without the investment incentives. The estimated property tax benefit is four hundred eighty thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars over ten years. The second proposed incentive, state and county sales tax abatement, totally seven percent based on. Four million, one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars in purchases subject to sales tax. The estimated benefit is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. The third proposed benefit is mortgage tax abatement of one percent from estimated mortgage of ten million. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars that may occur in two phases. The estimated mortgage tax benefit is a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The proposed total gross investment incentive for the Patent Property Manager LLC is estimated. Eight hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and four fees. The W W I D A administrator fee is ninety-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars for servicing incentives, including tenure pilot. The estimated legal fee is fifteen thousand. The estimated total net investment centers is seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, fifty-three dollars. The net incentives are seven point six percent of the total project cost. As far as community benefits, uh, we have identified four. First, uh, to create fifty-four new one-bedroom housing units to support the community's growing demand for housing. Especially for employees and local businesses in response to regional housing shortage. I'm gonna pause from that further back in our finding statement, since we have some time, I will. Read a little bit more that we have here in our report. Patent Property Manager LLC proposed to build the Washington Square Apartment Complex with fifty-four new units will assist with the region's chronic housing shortage. In October two thousand twenty-three, Warren County released a housing needs study and market demand analysis completed by Nova Grad. Nova Gratic. It has some concerning observations for the regional economic ecosystem. The study identified the local housing shortage is undermining local economic activity. There is widespread recognition that there is a county-wide housing shortage. Specific gaps referenced by local shareholders, including a lack of affordable housing for households with incomes up to a hundred fifty percent. Of the area of median income and below. Single-story structures were more appropriate for aging-in-place seasonal workforce housing and year-round workforce housing. Further, there is fairly widespread recognition that this housing shortage has become significantly. Extreme to now be an economic development and community development issue as well as a housing issue. The report goes on to say the existing housing stock at current prices is considered out of reach for local workforce. Working young fam- I'm sorry, local workforce, common young families and year-round residents, condominiums and owner-occupied duplexes. Townhouses and other types of missing middle housing structures for year-round occupancy are not common in the market. Through this type of design could fill a big, a variety of the supply gaps, for example. Higher density structures would be both more affordable and more appropriate to the changing demographics. Furthermore, the study states several major employers attributed staffing shortages and attrition to housing shortages. Major employers in the tourism industry have become more involved in housing discussions. And in some instances have started to offer housing as part of their compensation package. Outside of these markets and other parts of the country, workforce housing was more likely to refer to a house. Housing for teachers, paramedics and police officers, as well as persons employed in the service sector. The study identified the housing shortage problem is magnified by higher costs. The cost of housing development has increased, has increased significantly. Material costs increased as a result of supply chain problems and inflation. Labor costs increased due to increase in demand for specialized skills. Through, though costs have reportedly decreased from the pandemic peaks, they continue to be above pre-COVID levels. And market participants do not expect them to return to pre-COVID levels. Land costs have reportedly increased significantly in the past years and it's kind of due to the increase in demand for non-local buyers. For first to the rental market. So, um, with that, let me go back and continue through the four different positive impacts to the community. The second is generate an estimated hundred and twenty-plus construction jobs valued at over four point one million dollars. Third, generate construction material sales with an estimated value exceeding four point one million dollars with fifty-six percent sourced in Washington. In Warren County and ninety-five sourced from New York State. And finally, number four, as already discussed, complements the Glens Falls Downtown Revitalization Initiative. And that is my report.
Great, alright, I will open the floor to any other counts.
Well, if you couldn't make these incentives still, we've seen it work a while.
Yeah, I mean, I would, uh, I would have to, you know, check, check the numbers again and combine through to make sure it's still, so it can be affordable. It may actually affect the price that I have to charge for the apartments. Um, right now I have block, it's seen as all my buildings, or a couple, two bedrooms and this it is. While we're able to eat our harvest, you know, just below, below, uh, you know, market conditions, so you say affordable by, you know, building. A good quality unit, so the price, but, you know, the tag are changing, so it's, it's a gentleman, that's, that's the reason why we've come to the I D A. Looking for some incentives just to kind of keep in line with our overall budgets, we're producing, you have to go. Uh, we, we've seen expenses grow, grow over time, building on South Street and some of the other places that get going on our house. And it's always created on those fucking years ago, it's all, you know, it's all through the roof, the nation. For whatever reason, it was called terror, sir, however, uh, prices are certainly not, and part of the matter, the labor. Is, uh, is tripled in some cases. Bringing the concrete masons, everybody's just behind us on the wrangled, in order to keep the quality of workmanship. Some contractors, uh, that's, that's really why we're here. Wouldn't it, wouldn't you say we would stop production on that reading? I, I'm not gonna say that would be that, I would have, it would definitely be more challenging.
Apartments in the cap, but isn't that a fit, your market system?
Which is, uh, decided not to invest in downtown area, uh, at all. If earlier there is no apartments, certainly has some found, uh, but nothing from the city of Queens Falls. Uh, that's one of the big reasons, uh, that I, that I'm here, uh, you know, obviously other, other reasons driving it. But I, I'm pretty sheltered from the Scamor competition. We definitely build a higher quality product, uh, he's from Long Way, I see you're a friend of mine. He's, uh, his units are considered better than we were started, that's everything. Uh, yeah, we're, we're still in a, I show sparse quality, I don't see any competition.
Okay, let me guess, my last question is. Is single, well, second one, uh, are single, uh, one-bedroom apartments, are they, you would like to encourage? Like when I saw the first candy some of that, or? So, I, 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 I'm a landlord here, my source is of one, oh, forty months, twenty years history. Uh, so, if anybody's done a market study, it's definitely me, so. Uh, I had interest for two and three-bedroom apartments on the outskirts of the city. Where we offer a yard and there's that, that play area. Uh, when you get into the downtown area, I find that the two and three-bedroom units. They don't, once, once the people walk around, they don't, they don't really wanna have their kid walk around, it's, it's an urban area, so. You know, it really does drive single, you know, workforce, um. Yeah, we just have a higher demand for one-bedroom units in the city. I guess my last question is, uh, you, uh.
You know, there's legally, we couldn't restrict any types of income in the city of York, so we would allow any. At the, uh, the application process, if we make everyone go through, and then income sources need to be verified. Part of this, however, I can answer your question more, I have sexually developed people in my, and I know these doesn't right now. You know, we screen them, just like we screen anyone else, income isn't something that we can, you know. We're not biased towards the source of it, make sure that we help their rep.
Okay, and we presumably, our verified residents, you're leaving.
Correct, oh, yeah, no, there's, just like a couple of elderly people, they're, um, with social security, this is actually correct. We get a little bit of help, you get, you know, three or four dollars a month, this direct deposit, um, you know, it's a, it's a program. So, yeah, you know, we, I don't strive to fill my buildings all section A, you know, this is not low-income housing, not by any means. It's, you know, good quality housing for the, for the price.
I just wanna say, I grew up here, nineteen fifty-one, and the reason Washington Street exists is because my father baited. When he built the tower and he tried to buy a senior center across the street, tear it down for a parking lot. And I just did restoration, can't think of that, for almost three. I'm, I'm so happy to see Glens Falls finally turning around. Because by the mid to late seventies, this place was dead. You couldn't give away, and my father, the old building, the old Glens Falls insurance company, my father tried to give it away for a dollar. Nobody would take it. City of Glens Falls did the research, they couldn't afford to move in. The cost of maintaining that building was astronomical, he cried at the dinner table the night he had to tear that down. That's how much he wanted that building to save, but you know what? Had it not been for Dad, he was head of all, he continental insurance company, real estate in the United States, uh, maybe lame. If it weren't for the late George Davis, Bob Morgan, some of these names, you probably, your family would know. These are all the old top Glens Falls insurance companies, that, it's the late William T. Bar, who ended up being head of the bank. Those guys realized that all two thousand jobs were probably gonna be taken out of Glens Falls. In the late seventies, early eighties, and fund into other continental insurance company apartments. This is the final tipping point in the last five years in my. And the difference, and you know, I, I know why Stanford doesn't build downtown. Um, and he, you know, he's got a lot of apartments, he's very successful. But getting the incentives that were needed to get people to come downtown has taken far too long. And luckily at Bartholomew's, a get-it-rolling, fourteen Hudson, and, you know, you and Bonaccio and. Uh, you know, Mrs. Miller and, and, uh, you know, the Hosmans. I mean, we're really lucky to have this level of interest, I'm a hundred percent for this. Now, that said, I'm not a component of pilots in general. So, in the future, my feeling is, as the risk factor, where you're betting your money and, and, you know, Bonaccio's. That, I mean, fourteen Hudson was a baby of, uh, but as more and more developers that buy properties and are developing. And the demand's obvious here, I mean, at almost every apartment that's built, whether it's in Queensberry or Lake George or whatever. It gets running out of Austin immediately, we have a severe housing shortage. You're gonna be commended, and by the way, a full disclosure, I have no personal connection to Mr. Patton, no financial connection. I just met him for the first time, ten minutes ago, so. We need this, it's, it's the best possible thing that we can do. Because once we hit that tipping point downtown, we're gonna start to see jobs coming back here, but. And, and you're now luckily, we've got telecommunications, I have a niece who works for Freddie Matt. Out of Washington, D C, from her den on Fordham Road. That's, that's the world that we live in now, she's making New York-style money. And living in Glens Falls, the cost of living is less than half what it was to D C. We're seeing a lot more of these kinds of people coming in. And if you take a look at, you know, how many new restaurants, I mean, we, we are literally becoming the restaurant capital around here. The fine restaurants that we've got are good deals and we've got really top talent. So, the more people that we can get doing these things, right? I think over time, when the risk factor is down and the demand is up and prices are obviously gonna go up. Pilots need to be lessened for the downtown port, plus I also believe that, uh. And again, well, my dad tried to tear down the Sherman Mansion, which is probably the most historic home in Glens Falls. I mean, that man, if you know his history, he was before Finch Prime, he was, he was involved in everything. Plus the owner, million acre, somebody else, just, just did that five guy, so, um. We, we do have comprehensive plan under, underway right now in the city of Glens Falls. And I think that's going to start to address some issues, and I know what you went through with all the people. Complaining about interior, about dominant architectural masterpiece, alright. I don't agree with that one, I, I don't think that really truly was as valuable as some of the other homes. And in case you don't know, the insurance company, the parking lot next to the disco church many years ago, I believe was the Spearman. Before that was torn down for parking lot back then. We do have a beautiful architectural core in Glens Falls that is very significant, luckily. The only major block that got torn down in Ruben, was the Warren Glen Street Block. Sadly, the Rialto Theater, which is one of the most beautiful theaters around, some of the other things that went, you know, whatever. Um, and it never, it never got redeveloped in the way that they hoped, um, that's, that's the way it was. Fifty years later, we are there, we are there. Chuck and I were talking about, when I was a kid and I got off at exit eighteen and came into Glens Falls, you know, you get Western Avenue. The Leebowitz's West Side Auto Car Junkyard was right there. And, you know, you go right down Glen Street and then when they built Chicken Coops, as everybody knows, uh, you know, that was an ISO. I mean, it really turned out, he's building good stuff, I'm so happy he bought Peter Schabott's buildings. And that whole area, and I also knew the hottest section in town a little bit, and it come. I know a lot of young professionals, that's who he's building for, in my opinion. Yeah, some of these people probably won't live there for four or five years over the period, they'll move out into the residential part of town. Where they've got the yard and they can, they can do all that, or they'll go to Queensberry or whatever, but there's a need, he's filling it, I'm for it. Great. Alrighty, with that, I will ask if anybody wish, anybody else wish to speak?
We have a one point five, we need to correct area for the G C one, uh, area. Uh, the, the, that's just the requirement for the G C one, and we, that, I think we actually see that at the shared park, uh, again. Because it's a, it turns off, they have hours for the day, uh, the I D A is for the, to, let's say, vacate and our tenants manage. So, when our tenants stay for work in morning, they kind of, so, it's a really good shared situation on this, but, same thing, yeah. They would deal with, uh, parking garage there that. We can, like a traveler, but like, so that same thing happens, that's there, they all fill in evenings and then. That everybody just go there, that, this person.
And that's obviously been approved by the planning board.
Correct, yeah. Plus that parking lot has the ability to add more force, yeah, that, that is in case people. For this, for this spot, we have one.
So, I guess, is that, that's a per, you're, so you're presenting, you're saying, are you, I thought it said, yes, you can proceed. But, uh, you would be higher rents have, have to be charged for the. Uh, becoming pet.
And then, just one, one negative.
And, uh, there's no other way to, you know, produce price back unless that.
Yeah, we definitely look for buttons and, you know, scale back on the finishes and things.
Yeah, and you, okay, maybe they keep the price, but it would, the lesser, but, great part.
And that's not right, that's not quite like, you have a pretty good tracker and some, and there is, they're all in line with our quality and we do it, so.
So, the, you're, you have a pilot already tracked, but they, this is the day of all.
Uh, yeah, we, we have.
Okay, so it's not, not, uh.
Yeah, but we're still under construction, yeah, quite a bit.
When it's up, getting really tax, taxed up on all.
Okay, so, you're thinking, the, that's all, that's all.
Yeah, they are.
But that's part of the reason Skidmore doesn't filter, right, just so you know, yeah, you can't get the property cheap enough. Again, there's a lot of things, he doesn't ask for pilots for a reason, he's doing the same thing that this gentleman is doing, which is trying to keep. He hasn't asked for pilots for a reason, he's doing the same thing that this gentleman is doing, which is trying to keep. A certain level of rent, because once you exceed that, your market goes away.
Yeah, it's, there's definitely, you know, a couple hundred dollars more per month than.
It's a difference.
Or if I build houses as well and capture some of that market, but, um, it's. You know, it's definitely, there's definitely a threshold.
Right, so the question be with, or, uh. Is it likely that you should real start raising back and this part, it's like that, but again, the way. My own total problems in Glen's Falls, subsidized, not way back to subsidized.
So our uniform tax and policy allows us to do housing. Uh, every application is evaluated based upon its merits. Uh, so truly application by application, one of the reasons Mr. Pass here is because the Glen's Falls. IDA's uniform tax sound policy does not recognize any percent housing. We do, they might be changing their UTEP, and if they do change their UTEP, that will be a decision. The Glen's Falls IDA, but I could probably say, say for the other behalf, that they also will look at application by application, but by the way. The incentive need and justify.
So, I mean, you jump in here, I'm a businessman, not a politician, maybe there's a tax businessman as well, but. The, the best example I can give you is further south, that recently IDA board brought down the pilot. Because the county has said that they were in the strong real estate market, that they had the housing they need. Once that happens, which, uh, um, so the point I'm guessing five to eight years, the. The are looking at pilots and the max incentive will. Look, we'll be looking to bring it down in line to where that house, right now, we have such a critical need for housing. That I'm comfortable with less on the max, uh, pilots and in the future. As you had mentioned, when do we reach that point where we're no longer critical? It doesn't make sense to get the max incentives and that's something. So am I guaranteeing anything at this moment? No, but philosophically. We, we are in line that, hey, as the housing, we get the housing need in this area, obviously, incentives should be. Uh, less than, right now, at least, you know, we're on the bleeding edge. Once we get to the cutting edge, then I believe that, that incentives need to be looked at more. We really only need to look to Sarasota in the fifty, sixties and seventies. You could buy a mansion with a lot of products of sixty thousand dollars in fifty, sixty seven, nobody will. Nobody will go down to, if it were for Nora Fox and Dalton, a few other people that really got together. That owned buildings downtown and said, we gotta do something, and, you know. We're very lucky, trapping and the move of Skidmore going up to Mark Rockland was a big incentive. And Rockefeller truly respect. So that made for a very good solid base, but look at what happened there. Yeah, we do incentives and do anything down there now. Because there's so much increased in the, and there's so much need. Um, now, we're never going to be Sarasota, we were always a milk fat. Maybe George and Sarasota, we were luxury resorts for very wealthy people, this is where all the work. Thanks to Finch Prime, thanks to GE, you know, all along the river, that kind of thing. And so we're never going, and, and actually, I think that's our calling. We have a personality in this community that's not Glen's Fall, I mean, not Sarasota, or Lake George. Or we got the two best suburbs in the world, if you ask me. So we are getting a little bit off, I don't know why we're here, but we had a few minutes to publicize and. Yeah. Definitely make sure that your question was addressed, so. So I think it'll go away, basically, what you're saying is, you're gonna get to a point where you're going to have the market demand. So much that they can build profitably. And, and I just give you one last thing. My last four years in New York City, although I did most of my career in Madison, had television business. I worked at the largest lot in front of New York City. So we got a hundred and twenty five billion dollars in total accepted funding to build a high line. We built the Museum of Moving Image, I've worked on some of the largest real estate deals in New York City history, including Metro Tech. Um, you should see what the incentives were in those periods to make those things happen. And I was there when we opened the High Line, and Bloomberg stated specifically. Two point three billion dollars of real estate on both sides of sections one and section two were a direct result of the. So there's precedence.
Yeah, another, I know we're not going too long, but just a reminder, the housing incentives are not as beneficial as manufacturing incentives. We do have different tier incentives, so every pilot's not the same as my point in housing, there's a lesser benefit than manufacturing.
Well, I guess my, my job.
Right, no, exactly, here what we're doing is enabling housing for those jobs, and so. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts, but every application will be.
Which comes first, chicken or yet? I'm gonna leave this to the bell. Stat wishes to be heard. And there anybody jump online?
There is not.
All right, anyone wants to speak? Are there any final public comments? Having called three times public comments and hearing none, I will close this public hearing at twelve thirty five.